Hello, can you hear me?
Hello.
Yeah.
Okay, it was very quiet there.
Oh, Phil.
Scott, how are you?
Good.
Hey, Phil.
Hi Catherine, how are you?
Okay, hanging in.
Yep, about all we can do, right?
Mm-hmm.
Every day is an adventure.
Sure is. Y'all, y'all safe and well?
Yeah, my family's healthy so far, so that's good.
I was thinking about you in the Public Works. My brother and/or my cousin actually is in the Public Works in Park Ridge and he did a whole little video that he posted up on Facebook for what he did for the village to let people know that Public Works and everything else was still working and available to service their needs and keep everyone safe and the roads open, so.
That's a great idea.
I'll, I'll see if I can get it from him and send it to you so you can see it.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Waiting for Kirsten.
I have to ask you, so from your perspectives, are you only seeing?
Phil, go up to the very top right where it says gallery view.
Gallery view. I see participants, share content, stop video, and oh, there's. There we go.
A little easier. Okay, for those of you that haven't done one of these before, if you look down at the bottom left of the screen and you may have to mouse over it if it disappears after a series of time, there's a start audio and start video. For those of you that would like to speak or be seen, you need to click on those. Chief, good to see you. Let me see, we are joined by everybody here. All right, well, we have six o'clock here, so I will call to order the regular village board meeting. April 20th at 6:02 PM. Catherine, would you call the role, please?
Trustee Lyneum.
Here.
Trustee Stella.
Here.
Trustee Wood. I think she's there.
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Andreessen. Trustee Coonzie.
Here.
President Miller.
Here. All right, very good. We will forego our usual pleasurable legends for this meeting. Is there anybody from the public that has joined us? I see we have one. I can't there for an iPhone that is on mute. If anybody would like, from the public would like to ask comments on agenda items only, they are free to do so at this time. Okay. Saying none, first thing we have is public hearing for the May 1st, 20 through April 2021 annual budget for the Village of Eastundy. So at this time, we need a motion on this to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any against?
All right, to this point, we'll open the public hearing for the we have any form from anybody. No, okay. Greg, do we want to keep this open for a few minutes or you want to close this down?
If there's been no comments received by staff and no one has presented comments at this point, you could close the public hearing at this point and move on to the consent agenda.
All right, very good. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Very good. Catherine?
Trustee Lyneum.
Yes.
Trustee Stella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonzie.
Yes.
Very good. That takes us to the consent agenda. We have four items on there. Are there any trustees that would like to either delete or add anything to the consent agenda? All right, saying none, if we could have a motion on that consent agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Or do I got to read each one of them?
If you have it.
Okay, yeah, I got it. Okay, I make a motion to approve the regular village board meeting minutes dated March 2nd, 2020. Also motion to approve the regular village board meeting minutes dated March 16, 2020 and March 23rd, 2020. And then also a motion to advise a consent to the village president's reappointment of Don Holloman to the police pension board for a term expiring on May 10th, 2022.
One second.
Very good. Catherine?
Trustee Lyneum.
Yes.
Trustee Stella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood. Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonzie.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have no old business on new business. We have several items here. The first one is a motion to approve an ordinance adopting the 2021 budget. If we can have a motion on that one, please.
I'll move to approve an ordinance adopting the 2021 annual budget.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Just a quick question. There were a couple items that seemed, well, let me ask you, from our discussion from our prior meeting of the budget approval, was there anything that was removed?
Yes, we would like to briefly go through some items for you prior to voting, if that's okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Brandis, are you able to turn on your video?
Is she on?
I don't, she's there because she's texting. Brandis, are you able to turn on your? Okay, well, let me, I'll text her and see if she's there. And Catherine, are you recording this?
It is recording, yes.
Oh, it is.
Audio, I have audio and video, both.
So you're saying I should keep hearing gestures?
Hello? Oh, Brandis, now we can hear you. Okay.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I did not have to unmute on the actual Zoom.
Okay, if you want to go through, if you want to start it off with the revenue reduction.
Okay, well, I guess first we can address this current fiscal year. I believe when we discussed it on March 16th, we talked about the reduction that we will likely see for sales tax. So at this point, we pretty much assume that all revenues that we have received thus far is the revenue that we'll receive for the remainder of the fiscal year. And with that, you'll see in your budgets on page, I believe it's page 12, that what's in there is pretty much there. I don't know if you're looking, there's about 5.5 million for the general fund and 9 million for non-general fund revenues, 2.8 million for restricted youth funds, for a total of about $12 million. That's what we have projected so far for the year. Keep in mind that we have not closed March and we have not closed any revenues that we may have received for this current month. So we may see some increases in revenues, but I don't foresee it being a major increase. So that's it pretty much for this fiscal year. We see in a general fund, we expect about $160,000 increase or surplus because expenditures were below what we projected. And overall, we see about a $900,000 increase for all funds for the village. If we go to page three of the budget summary, we kind of tried to break down what we had initially presented to you on March 16th for projected revenues versus what we expect to see as an impact of the COVID-19 crisis. So you'll see initially, we had proposed for these identified revenues in the general fund, we had initially projected about a $4.7 million revenues for within the general fund. Now, this isn't all of general fund revenues, but these are the ones that we identified that may be impacted by COVID-19. And as you can see, we project about a 50% reduction in overall revenue for those identified revenues in the general fund, which is about $2.3 million difference. And primarily, we see that the sales taxes are mostly impacted as well as the amusement tax, which is revenue that we receive from Santa's Village and some of our other amusement areas. On the next page, you'll see that capital funds, we also project the impact there of about 30%. Now, it's our video gaming revenue, which goes into our capital fund, which funds capital projects as well as our vehicle replacement schedule. We also project a 10% decrease in our water and sewer fund. Primarily, we are right now in our last cycle of billing for our utility billing. So we may actually see a bit of an increase for this fiscal year for water and sewer fund revenues than what I actually have projected for the year. But we also have waived the penalty for water and sewer fees. So that may, that's why you see about the 10% reduction. But overall, we see about a $2.5 million reduction or 37% reduction in revenues from what we had initially proposed to you at the budget workshop on March 16th. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
If I could just add one thing onto that, I think it's important to understand. We, we have tried to guess the reduction. No one's really standardized what revenues are going to see reductions. So we tried to look at it just from an Eastundy perspective, knowing the one thing we haven't addressed is property taxes. I think what would come more likely is some mortgage forgiveness, mortgage relief. But we have to keep in mind, if there's mortgage forgiveness and property taxes are included in people's mortgages, I don't know what the potential impact on property taxes could be. The state told the businesses, you know, don't pay your sales tax, don't make sales tax payments under due. So that impacted us today in the fiscal year budget we're in now. That's where the revenue losses are that we're anticipating for this year. But if at any point they come and say, don't pay your property taxes, what I want you to keep in mind is our property taxes for our general fund are minimal and they're all earmarked towards the police pension fund. Only saying minimal, they're about $650,000. But our property taxes for the TIF funds are significant and are required to meet our debt obligations and are also our economic development obligations. So that is something I want you to keep in mind. It could happen and it's on our forefront, but at this point, we have not addressed it because addressing that would be catastrophic. There's no way to, for us to address it at this point. So I'm, I'm just hoping that they, they don't do something like that, that everybody is required to continue to pay their property taxes.
So can I ask then, if, did I understand Brandis correctly to say that we are, since the last budget meeting we had, experiencing a 37% drop in revenue or estimated drop in revenue? And if that's the case, you know, certainly expenditures have to be, you know, addressed accordingly. So, I mean, it can't just be a personnel type of thing. I'm just kind of wondering, you know, where is it we can cut?
Yeah, I'll go over the expenditure side now. That's a good segue, Jeff. If you move on to the, that same page, page two of the budget summary, we've got an, does anyone see that? Or if you do not see it, I am able to share a document, but.
Well, I don't have mine in front of me, unfortunately.
You're really testing my capabilities here. Um, I will, I'll summarize it for you, okay? So in addition to not filling vacant positions, we are going to, we are proposing to reduce the police pension contribution to the amount required. It's more than what was required by state statute, but was levied by the village board back in December. So we're reducing the police pension contribution $175,000. We were going to contribute the additional amount so that we would meet the Lauterbach and Amen recommendation. It, it's fine to reduce it at this time anyway because there, it's not going to be earning anything. Okay, it's not a good move. It's not something I like to do, but it's not as if the fund is going to be seeing drastic increases. So that's why we're recommending that we, we hold on to those funds now when we need them. We're recommending to cut the entire community events budget. I do not foresee gatherings larger than 50 people being permitted. And I, and even if they were, I'm not sure it will be safe. We may be okay by the time we hit Oktoberfest, but this could have a resurgence in fall and we won't know that. And it takes us months to plan and then we would be out all of that money. And the budget for Oktoberfest is $70,000 and some is supported by sponsorships, but you can net that at $60,000. So it's a significant expenditure in a difficult time. We are proposing to cut both police vehicles. One of the police vehicles was on the deferred list last time at the budget workshop. This time, we're proposing to cut both of them. We're proposing to cut the road projects. We've made sure we have enough money for patching, but we're basically going to just limp along. We're proposing to cut the facade grants. There was one facade grant of $25,000 and then there was $35,000 in entryway signage to finish out or to continue with our signage program. We're proposing to cut national tool. At this point, we don't know if there's a traffic signal anyway, so we're proposing that we just take it out of the budget. And if we get to that point where there's a traffic signal, then this time the state's going to have to wait on us. That's the way we're going to approach that. We're proposing to take the village home maintenance budget down from $75,000 to $50,000, a reduction of $25,000. I would eliminate the budget, but the building is literally falling apart. There's broken windows. So, I mean, Leil and I talked about it. I think there, it's important to keep maintaining the building to preserve it. It's only going to get worse if we don't. And then we're proposing to cut water meters, which there's about 200 water meters that we have to go manually read and Phil is just dying to get rid of these because it's labor intensive. Somebody literally has to walk around to these 200 homes, but it's not a crisis situation. And so we're proposing those cuts. So there was one other thing that we inadvertently left out of this memo, which was a Hill Street lift station improvement, which was 40 grand. So it's around, the cuts are around $1.3 million. And that leads us to a total budget shortfall of $1.7 million in cash that we would have to use in order to satisfy our expenditures. I do want to see if I can share this screen with you. Let me see if it's possible. Okay. Can you guys see this screen? It's a little spreadsheet. It said COVID-19 budget on top?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, excellent. Okay, what I want to point out, can you see my mouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I don't know why, but it's flashing for me. I don't know if you guys are flashing video, but, um, what we've done here is I've taken, when we looked at the cash balance reserve policy last time at the budget workshop, I was focusing only on the general fund and the water and sewer fund because those are where our operations occur. So now we have a beginning cash balance that's been significantly modified because we aren't going to be receiving all the revenues we thought we would be receiving. We'll be missing at least two, three or four months of sales tax, depending on how far behind the businesses were on paying their sales tax and what the state had already collected. So at the time when we were discussing this, we were talking about a 35% cash balance reserve. And you can see that, that's the third item on the spreadsheet, which says cash balance reserve with a total cash balance reserve of what we would want, we wanted to have in the past between these two funds of 2.8 million. So the next line item is the deficit that we're projecting in these funds. Now, the deficit in water and sewer will probably go away because we missed that Hill Station project. So there's really no deficit in the water and sewer fund. There's a $1.6 million deficit in the general fund after cutting about $600,000 out of general, which leaves us a total deficit of about $1.7 million. By the time we reach the end of this fiscal year, if we go according to budget, and usually we do much better than budget. That's what I typically strive for is to do better than budget. We've surplus $500,000, we've surplus a million, but it all depends on what's going on with revenues and the economy. And obviously, it's highly susceptible right now. So by the time we reach the, reach the end of this budget we're proposing in April 30th, 2021, we'll be projecting that we'll have $1.7 million in cash between these two funds. That's primarily funded by the water and sewer funds, which are extremely healthy. We could have done a large water or sewer project this year, and we thought about it. I thought about proposing the water tower, but then this started happening. And so we can use cash available in the water and sewer fund if needed. We can borrow from it. But we do have about $450,000 that will be left over in the general fund. We also have, because we cut the road project, we'll also have over $300,000 in MFT and $80,000 in capital at the end. That gets us to a total of $2.1 million at the end of the fiscal year, which represents 26% of the expenditures required within the general fund and the water and sewer fund for operations. But by the end of the fiscal year, we'll still have 26% of our operating costs. So if we hit another bad year, we still have funds available to basically coast on. And of course, we'll propose additional cuts and make additional modifications. But I wanted to point that out to you because I, the last time we were talking about this, everything was rosy. And this time it's much different. But I want you to know that even after using $1.7 million that we have available, we will still be fine. And I want to just answer any questions you might have about that.
Well, I have a quick one. If I could jump in, then do these numbers as far as the deficit that we're going to be running and the ending cash balances for 2021 assumes that we extend the sunset on the refuse?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Anyone else?
It's very clear.
The purpose is just to make perfectly, perfectly clear that you know that we're spending money to get through the year. So, but we will revisit this. We'll have to revisit it. But at this point, with this adopted budget, if we didn't revisit it and everything stayed the way we think it's going to be, we will spend $1.7 million. We could get some money from the state. That's a possibility. But I want to make sure everyone fully understands that.
We could win the lottery, too.
Okay, sure.
So then can I ask, the national tool signal, that's the Speedway, correct?
Yeah, it's a, it's a small roadway needed for the signal project that the state is requiring us to do in order to get the grant funding.
Okay. And then what was the water project that you said you put off? The water tower, was it the painting of it? Or, I know we had that on the books and we spoke about that last time. It was, you know, half a million dollars or whatever it is to paint it, $400,000. That's been put aside, of course, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We do have the funds to do it. I just wouldn't recommend doing it at this time.
No.
Route 25 tower inside and out. So it is about a half million dollar project, right Phil? You're muted, but I can see you kind of talking.
Yes, just a, just a shade under $500,000, that's correct, $450,000. Good to think, yeah.
Okay. Well. Okay.
Okay. So there's no other?
We have a motion in a second on the floor for the approval of item A, which is an option of the 2021 annual budget. If we have any further discussion on this. Catherine?
Trustee Lyneum.
Yes.
Trustee Stella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonzie.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Additionally, we have a motion. We need a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 compensation plan. If we could have that motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal 2021 compensation plan.
Wait a second. That was Kirsten. Okay, discussion?
Yeah, can I ask, does this differ or is it the same thing as prevailing wage? I mean, you know how every year we have to approve the prevailing wage rates that the state sets forth for us?
This is just, this is the salaries of the village employee.
Okay.
Okay. Catherine?
Trustee Lyneum.
Yes.
Trustee Stella.
Yes.
Trustee Wood.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen.
Yes.
Trustee Coonzie.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Now, if we could have a motion on item C, which is the garbage and refuse sunset?
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending ordinance 17-40, garbage and refuse sunset date extensions.
Okay, very good. Discussion on this?
Well, this, this seems like it's just kind of a housekeeping item for us because every year since we put it in, we've been extending it. So what I'm wondering is, first off, how many years into the future do we have to do this? I'm just wondering if there's a point of even having the sunset at this point because this is now our third year of extending it. And so I don't know if it's a bit of a tease, maybe not fair, that kind of thing to suggest that we're going to go ahead and sunset this only to get to the point where towards eliminating it. We've talked about doing that, obviously. And, you know, maybe that's just what the sunset suggests. But it just seems a bit disingenuous that we hold it out there and let everybody know that we're going to do, we're going to do it, and then pull the rug out early April every year.
I know it's important.
Well, we have reduced it. I, you know, and I'm, I'm not, you know, moaning and groaning about anything. I'm just kind of taking it from a resident perspective, you know, they see this and then it's like, well, wait a minute, you know?
I think the important thing is that we reevaluate this every year, and that's why this is there. So yes, it is kind of a housekeeping issue, but it does force us to reevaluate this every single year, because we'd, we'd like to be able to do something. We'd like to have other options. Just, this is probably not that year.
Yeah, no, no, no. Certainly not this year.
Okay. Anything else? All right, Catherine.
Trustee Lyman?
Yes.
Trustee Sella?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Pretty good. That takes us to item D, which is approval of an IDOT resolution for maintenance. We can have a motion on that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve an Illinois Department of Transportation Resolution for Maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code in order to expend 70,750 in motor fuel tax funds for the purpose of maintaining the village, villages' local roadway system.
Second.
Very good. Discussion?
Well, can I ask, is, are we, are we expending this money or putting together this motion to do so just as a matter of procedure? Or is this something that is special apart from our normal expenditures? Because it seems like the motor fuel tax, the whole purpose of it is for road construction and maintenance. And what I'm wondering is, do we have to get permission from the state in order to do that through this motion?
More or less, yes. We do, correct.
This, I mean, so anytime that we're going to be expending funds for, through motor fuel tax for road maintenance, we have to say so through this kind of step?
The state wants to know exactly how we spend motor fuel tax dollars. And so this is procedurally how we start the process. And then once the fiscal year is over, then we report back. This is kind of how we're planning to spend it. And then at the end of the fiscal year, we'll report exactly how we spent the motor fuel tax dollars.
And in the unlikely event that we don't spend it all, are we, are we bound to that figure? Or can we pull back any of it?
If we don't spend all of this, it just, the remaining amount remains in our motor fuel tax fund. And then we adjust our paperwork with IDOT accordingly.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on this? Catherine?
Trustee Lyman?
Yes.
Trustee Sella?
Yes.
Trustee Wood?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
All right. Now, the moment you've all been waiting for. Item E is Arbor Day Proclamation. Not going to read that to you tonight. I'm trusting that you've all read that and printed it out.
Read it.
Read it to your families. Financial reports, you have the warrants list in your packet. Reports, gee, I don't even know where to start today. Who else? It's been a long week. It's been a long month. Jennifer and I are on constant calls with everybody, and yet it doesn't seem like anything's happening. So if there's anything exciting coming up, we'll be the first to let you know. But lots of talk, little action, all I could say. So we'll go around the board with the trustees and see if you got anything interesting for us tonight. Trustee Mahoney?
No, no report.
Trustee Coonsey?
I guess I did have one question. And I can't all of a sudden remember the name of the place, but the place that's moving in next to, or in place of, or next to Black and Gray.
DC Cubs.
DC, thank you. Are they making progress? Or I know that nobody's going to be opening anytime soon, but I would also like to see that we're not holding them up for any reason if they want to keep moving. Construction in this state is actually considered essential, which I could tell you because I'm in that business. So they could be working on their space if they wanted to.
Do you want me to chime in on that?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, they did resubmit their plans. They, we've approved their plans for the village, but they submitted to us. The only thing we're waiting on is their approval from the King County Health Department.
Okay.
Thank you. That was all I had.
Very good. Trustee Sella?
No report.
Okay. Trustee Lyman?
Just a couple of comments. One, Jennifer, I'd like to, if you could, give me a buzz. I got an issue that really can be taken offline for discussion. I'd like to run by you. Also, just a quick question then on the Speedway. Is the opening of the Speedway dependent on that light? Can it open without it?
That's a corporate decision that they were going to go back and discuss. They were waiting to see if we heard from IDOT. We asked IDOT what's happening with our signals following this issue, and we haven't heard from them. So they need to decide that at a corporate level. They've been kicking that idea around for a couple of years, actually, and they've always decided to wait because they thought it was coming, and they thought it was coming. But, so they're discussing it. It's an option.
A number of people ask about it, and I really don't know how to tell them other than it's, the state's slowed down, you know, we have to wait for that light.
I wish we had an answer for you on that, but unfortunately, we're not getting any clarity on that from anybody.
Okay.
So they may or may not get the light. They may or may not open without it. It's the best they got right now.
Yeah.
So they built a new store. They'd be foolish not to.
Well, and you're, yeah, you're looking at, you know, several million dollars worth of an investment, though. You'd think they'd want to recoup some of it, the longer it waits, you know?
And we offered them the opportunity for a temporary light in the past, too, which they decided not to do. So
Okay.
There's really a third option as well, too.
Okay.
They decided that's what they want.
And then also to, to that point in that area, the work that's being done along 72 on the south end, on the south side there, is that in preparation of either the extension of, it's not Christina Drive, I don't think, but, well, it might be. I mean, I'm just wondering, is that village related? Or is that just state?
If you're talking about west of there, I'm sorry, east of there?
Yes.
Yeah. So that is between the power lines and Healy Road, and that is a project that Enbridge is working on regarding their pipeline.
Okay, okay.
And I believe it's just maintenance and some, some underground work that they're doing. They're not, I don't think they're putting in new pipelines. I think it's just it's maintenance on existing stuff.
Okay. And they won't be tripped up by IDOT coming in and putting in a light then, correct? They, they understand?
No.
Okay, good enough.
Their, their project runs from South Bend, Indiana to Superior, to Lake Superior, up by Ashland and Bayfield, throughout the entire state of Illinois. It's basically pumping shale crude from the sands in North Dakota, however it gets to that part of northern, was, you know, far northern Wisconsin, southern Minnesota, and then runs all the way to the terminal in, on the lake, Lake Michigan. They don't get slowed down by anybody.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Trustee Andreessen?
I've got to report just a comment. I just wanted to say that I think the, the village administration, President Miller and all that, have done an excellent job of putting out information about everything that's been, well, at least I won't say available from the state, but at least promised or conceptualized by the state. Because if anybody's ever applied for these, they know that there's nothing coming from them. But in theory, that they're nice programs to, to be aware of. And I think the village has done an excellent job of, of putting the information out there. And I say that as a resident and a business owner in town. So it's been very helpful for me. And like I said, I think you guys have done an excellent job on that front.
We appreciate that. There's a lot of information coming. Most of it useless, but we try and sort through it all and pull anything good off the pile. And then, you know, just Jennifer and I, obviously, everybody on staff is working incredibly hard on this now. But I really want to thank Amanda and Brad for getting all the information up on the webpage, too.
Yeah.
They've put together Facebook pages. They've gotten everything up there. And as we've seen all the good things, we file them off to them and they get it up there instantly. So, you know, big shout out to those guys, too, because they need to get credit for that.
No, it's very helpful. It helps cut through all the, well, I won't say all the BS, but the lower hanging BS.
A lot of it. All right. Trustee Wood?
Comment. Do you know?
Okay, very good.
He did have a green mic.
Trustee Wood, if you're, if you're speaking, you need to get a little closer to a microphone. You sound like you're talking in a pillow.
You know, well.
We can barely hear you.
Barely.
You either need to turn up, are you on your computer?
Yeah, I am.
All right. See if you can get closer to the mic or turn up your volume a little bit more.
No, that's good. I'll call you about it later. Thanks, Leo.
Okay. No problem. All right. That leaves us with Village Administrator.
Okay, I lost you. How long have you been calling on me?
Just now.
Just now.
Perfect timing.
Thank God, I was panicking. Okay, I just have a couple of things. I don't want to make this a love fest either, but I, I do want to make sure that the board understands and that we thank Leo for his leadership. This is not, obviously, not everyone is, has the same leadership as Leo does and not the same opinion on this. But Leo's been following this issue, and he understands it almost better than anyone I've, I've talked to. And please listen to him because he's setting the right tone and the level of seriousness. And that's important for our organization. I want to thank the department heads. We've had our battles, even amongst our own staff, on how to deal with this, how to get our, our staff to understand that this is serious, how to get them to put their PPE on, how to help us generate emergency operation plans that didn't exist. I can't thank the department heads enough for that. And especially, I can't echo enough of what Leo said about Brad and Amanda. And this is really a communications crisis. And this communications crisis is not over, especially when you have one good day and the state is then telling people that this is over. No, this is not over. The tail end of this, as soon as we hit the peak, we don't know when that's going to be, is a very, very long, 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 long time. As long as there's one person out there that isn't isolated, then this problem will continue. And so I just wanted to thank the department heads and Brad and Amanda and Leo for, for that. And I wanted a note of encouragement. I wanted to tell you that on other matters, we are still moving forward. Our staff is working remotely. We're doing a good job as best we can with that, and our staff is being held accountable. And we're getting a lot accomplished, even though we're trying to figure out how to work from home like everybody else is. On the economic development side, I was able to settle the terms with Caterpillar. And so it looks like they'll be coming with or without a signal. 55 East Main is still prepared to go through the planning and zoning process, and that's coming up soon. And I know Chris is still working with DC Cubs and Nanos and One East Main on the downtown projects that are going forward. So we're still moving ahead. We're still looking for shopping for IT vendors, shopping for new finance software. We know that IT is the future. And if we had better IT right now, we'd be prices even better than we are. So I just wanted to let the board know that we're still moving forward. I'm constantly distracted by children throughout the day, but I will do my best to call you if you need something. So do not hesitate to call or show me an email or a text. And I'll get back to you. I'll have somebody get back to you for sure. So unless you have anything for me, that's all I have.
Yeah, Jennifer, then can I ask, as far as that IT expenditure, is that something that can be deferred based on, you know, budget crunch, budget pressure?
I, you know, I thought about that, but it creates efficiencies for us that could offset future cuts that we, that we may need to see. For example, had we had this in place, we don't have any building department software. So we'd be able to automate the whole building department across us to continue to operate remotely and also reduce staff time. We'd be able to automate our whole accounts payable process where approvals are done with a check mark that comes to your, you know, into your account rather than paper and signing and passing paper around constantly. So same with payroll. And the automation of payroll will allow us to eliminate an expenditure that we have with an outside consultant who assists us with payroll. So we know that moving forward by automating our processes will save us money down the line. So Leo and I talked about it. Leo's an IT guy, and he agreed that this is something we need to do. I don't want to speak for you, Leo, but.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, you spend a little, you get a lot. It's just one of those things that we, we've been just living on old legacy systems and, and bad stuff. And I think we could be a whole lot more efficient. And, you know, you talk about the building software, and we talked about the finance software. You know, one of the benefits of having good packages running your business is that it allows you to see where you've been making mistakes and, and save money. So most of the time, these, you know, putting in a new system like this, basically will pay for itself. So there, you know, there's things like, it's like, do we fix the windows and the roof in Village Hall? Yeah, we kind of have to do that. I kind of look at it the same, same thing.
It's a lot more than finance software. It's always been pitched as a finance software, but it's really just automating all of our processes, which we're doing primarily on paper, which is fine, but it takes a lot of time to do things on paper.
That's the software side of it. What about the IT services that we're now looking for new?
The IT services.
Bad spot there, or?
Well, first of all, we don't have any quotes back yet, but, you know, it's possible that there's something that, some of that can be outsourced, certainly. I mean, we don't need a full-time IT person with the, the system that we've got sitting there, you know, waiting for the phone call, if we can address some of these things ourself. And that's, that's been one of the frustrations with the system that we have, is that many of the lower-level tasks, like what we call them in business, moves, adds and changes. Somebody needs a phone. Somebody needs an email turned on or turned off. We can't do those things locally, where there's no reason why Jennifer or Amanda or somebody that was tasked with that responsibility couldn't just do that. There's no reason Catherine can't send up an email for a new person that's starting at the village or for a new trustee. There's, there's just no reason for that. So one of the things that this will give us is more responsibility for our own software, which I think eliminates a lot of the need for IT representative service. Certainly, I don't think we're going to try and Catherine to be, you know, swapping blade servers and, and things like that. But, you know, a lot of that stuff is, is easily outsourced. So, you know, whether or not we need to hire a full-time, you know, IT staff to do this, or we just rely on, you know, CDW that I've worked with closely for many, many years, has great service packages where, you know, you buy things, they're under warranty, they have a problem with something, they come in and fix it, and they, they have all kinds of consultants, billions of dollars with consultants. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure that we can find somebody to do this. It's not like we're running away or it's a small job.
Yeah, we're going, we're looking contractually. And we think because of some of the mandates that Wes Dundee was putting upon us, like computer replacement mandates, that will actually come in less expensive. My experience is that this is less expensive. And we were recently notified, you guys were copied on a, an email from Wes Dundee, that they no longer want to provide services to us. So we're in a position where we have to shop. So Brad has started that process, and we have until August to do it. So we really don't have a choice, but I don't, I don't see it costing us more than our Wes Dundee contract.
Good question, though. Okay. Anything else for the administrator?
Thank you.
Village Attorney?
I have no report this evening, but thank you for the reason to put on a coat and tie. It's been almost a month. So thank you.
We would have, we would have accepted you in a t-shirt, to be honest.
I'll see you in two weeks.
But he's only wearing a coat and tie.
Very good. Village Engineer?
No report.
All right. Chief?
Well, I really have no report, but I would like to tell you that, as, as you intuitively know, calls for service are about overall, just less than half of what we usually receive. And more importantly, the calls for service, thank you, the calls for service on Thursday night, Friday and Saturday nights. as, as you intuitively know, calls for service are about overall, just less than half of what we usually receive. And more importantly, the calls for service, thank you, the calls for service on Thursday night, Friday and Saturday nights, which is the bar crowd, are down seventy-five percent over last year. So that's great, that's great. We still have, you know, some domestics and occasional collisions on the roadway and such, but overall, it's very quiet. In fact, I'm wondering what I'm gonna put in my monthly report.
I saw an article this morning, California was saving forty, what was it, forty million dollars a day just because of the reduction in car crashes?
Wow.
They were gonna say, they were on track to save something like a billion dollars just through, just through car, car crashes, which is.
So we're responding a little differently to crashes now. If there's, if the cars can be removed from the roadway and if there are no personal injuries, we, we're very often telling people to go online and fill out a crash report online to eliminate or reduce personal contact. It seems to be.
Have you noticed an increase in speed? It seems to me, just in the downtown area at least, people are driving faster and louder than ever before and not ready to get any place. And I think it's just.
What, what time of the day are you talking about, Leal?
During the daytime, all, all day, all night.
Wow.
We had one, we had a, a night shift officer had a car at ninety miles an hour on Route Twenty Five. I think that's unusual. And you, you should be aware, we're not doing normal traffic enforcement. If the situation demands enforcement, officers take it. But if it's just a garden variety violation, you know, we're laying off.
Yeah, yeah.
And also the, you know, there's no, no such thing as expired license plates right now or expired driver's licenses, same thing.
Right.
In fact, we're driving our new squad car with, with expired temporary plates.
How's that, how's that working out? How's the new vehicle?
Everybody likes it.
Yeah, looks great.
And to, in order to reduce exposure, we've assigned now, every squad car is assigned to two different officers, one on days, one on nights. And so we're, we're trying to reduce, you know, having all different officers rotating cars.
Okay. Good. Any questions for the Chief? Public Works?
Well, I'm happy to report that all of our water and wastewater operations are operating normally. And we're beginning to transition over into our spring landscaping activities. And then hopefully here real soon, we can disassemble all of our snow and ice equipment. The last two snow events that we've had, the last week or two have been, haven't resulted in a, in a response. We haven't needed to in terms of plowing or salting, just because the road temperatures have been up above freezing and it's effectively melted all the snowfall. But we did, this past snow event, we did anti-ice a little bit just to ensure that, to help ensure that we wouldn't have any slippery spots, so to speak, before or during the snow event, so.
Good.
Thank you, I noticed that.
Go ahead. I, I haven't noticed it in town as much, but it's, people are bad. I was at Jewel this afternoon and you walk out and there's like, everybody's latex gloves are on the floor, on the, on every place they're just dumping them anywhere. Are you seeing that anywhere around town?
No gloves, not any type of PPE associated with this pandemic, no.
Okay. Well, East Dundee people are nicer, so. So that's, okay. Any questions for Public Works? Building?
Well, it, it, because construction is continuing, it hasn't been interrupted by this crisis. It, it appears that we're gonna have a fairly normal, average year, possibly above average if, if everything that's on the plate right now goes ahead. So that's an optimistic situation there.
Good. I got an opportunity to stop in Nano's or NANO's? I don't know.
No, 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 no.
Thank you. The other day, because I just happened to see Frank walking in there. Place is gonna look spectacular.
All right.
So he went up to the full twelve-foot ceilings and he told me that this week he's getting the awning removed and getting the glass in and hopefully starting to get the, the water lines cut in in the back. But done a lot of work. There's a lot of drywall up. There's a lot of walls up. It's, it's gonna look spectacular in there, so.
You know, speaking of that, Leal, and I don't wanna jump in or interrupt, but that was one of the items I'd really like to discuss is the waiver of the tap-on for that business. It's about sixty-five hundred dollars. And I talked to Frank and it actually is gonna make a significant difference in the amount of, of money that, and he can put into other more ornament type of expenditures and things. So I'm just wondering, with that, you know, we went ahead and gave huge amount of waiver on eight fifty-five and have been able to weather that, apparently budget-wise. And I'd like to discuss, either offline or whatever, the idea of waiving the, the tap-on or significantly reducing it for, for the deli. It just seems.
We can discuss that. I'll, I'll tell you what my feelings are right now. We made Mockingbird do it. We made River, we made Diamond Gems do it. Eight fifty-five is a different animal, just because you've got a whole bunch of units in there. And then basically, we're getting charged tap-ons for the whole thing.
True enough.
At what point, at what point do I say, yeah, I like Frank, he's special? But Mockingbird, you gotta spend ten thousand dollars for one water, Diamond Gems, you.
I, I fully agree. What we do for one, we should do for all. But that was my argument when we, when we decided to vote on eight fifty-five. It was, there's four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars worth of tap-on. We went ahead and waived it off.
Well, wait a second, but he, they, he did pay the tap-on, didn't he? We're talking about the projected maintenance that we waived, not the actual tap-on fees, isn't that true?
No. No, that isn't.
I can clarify two things. Frank did pay his tap-on fees, isn't that correct, Chris?
Yeah, the tap-on fee was actually thirty-one hundred and twenty-five dollars, but he paid it on Friday. They actually did the tap today.
He, he called me when he thought it was that much, and I asked Jennifer and Chris to go back and take a look at things and see if that's really what was necessary. And the number wasn't. It was, it was much, much lower. And I'm not sure if that's because somebody sharpened their pencils or, or Frank was upgrading off of.
Well, the, I, I think what I originally told him was how much a tap-on was for an inch and a quarter was. But because he was upgrading, you get a fifty percent discount for the, for the fee schedule.
Yeah, so I don't know when the last time you talked to him was, Jeff, but I talked to him the other day and he was quite happy with the whole thing, the reduction.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, it's been about, it's been a couple of weeks since I spoke with him. But, you know, at the same time, you know, and I, I understand, Leal, and I fully agree that what we do for one, we should do for all. But eight fifty-five, I, I don't know that it's necessarily a different animal. I know that it's, you know, what we're charging per unit is, you know, considerably more. But, you know, as I said, when we voted on it, the idea of waiving it all, I don't think was necessary. Waive, waive a good portion of it, waive seventy-five percent of it, but keep some for future maintenance, and that's the whole.
We're getting a little off track here, since this isn't an agenda item. We can discuss that. We're always willing to look at our rates. We wanna charge what's fair, but on the other hand, we can't just waive fees for everybody, so. So, finance. Brandis, did you have anything for us this afternoon, evening? Other than your excellent budget report?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to thank department heads for their assistance and allow me to pass to them with developing the budget. And also, we will work hard to try to get out monthly financial reports so that we are all in a loop in a price of what's going on and how revenues are coming in and how expenditures are, are going. That's it.
Very good. Okay. Last item we have on here is for public comments. Do we have anybody else that would like to address this board about anything? Any comments? No? Give you a minute? Okay. Well, that, that is gonna be a wrap for this evening, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Very good.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hey.
Are you opposed? All right, we are done officially for this evening. Did anybody have any issues with Zoom? Are you finding this fairly easy to work with?
Yeah. Nice.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All good.
If anybody's, if anybody's ultra bored out there, I'm running out of things to do, I will let you know that YouTube has the 2017 Cubs World Series games on.
I thought like Connie was watching that.
It's not quite as tense and dramatic as it seemed like it was at the time, but there's stuff out there, guys. All right, stay safe. We'll update you with anything. You're all doing a great job, so keep at it for this together. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Thanks.